Good morning. Welcome to those joining us here at the Texas Tribune Studio 919 in Austin and online for today's event titled, "The Special Session: Big Takeaways and What's Next." I'm Matt Ewald, the Texas Tribune's Senior Director of Events and Live Journalism. Texas lawmakers came into the third special session, which started in October, focused on education, primarily around the issues of school vouchers and border security legislation. But the session concluded without related legislation passing, with the governor immediately calling for another special session. And we are already seeing more movement, movement which I'm sure we will be talking about much this morning. A Texas House committee has advanced school voucher legislation that is poised for discussions on the House floor as soon as Friday, and border security legislation passed the House last night. So today, we've convened journalists covering this Texas Capitol to discuss how the policy debates have played out in the previous special session and what we should expect from the current one. What are the big takeaways from the policy debates? How will potential changes affect our state's teacher shortages and gaps in student performance? We'll also look at the politics of the Texas Legislature in a year of considerable tensions between the House and the Senate. How do they navigate the special sessions amid massive tension between House Speaker Dade Phelan and Lieutenant Governor Dan Patrick? And what should we expect as we look ahead to the 2024 campaign? Our moderator for this event is Texas Tribune Politics Editor Rebecca Allen, and our panel includes the Tribune's politics reporter Zach Desparte, Edward McKinley, Austin Bureau reporter for the Houston Chronicle and San Antonio Express/News, and Patrick Zvitek, the Tribune's primary political correspondent. Before we begin today's program, I'd like to acknowledge our sponsors, the Texas Association of School Business Officials and philanthropy advocates. Though corporate sponsors and donors underwrite this event, they play no role in determining the content, speakers, or line of questioning. We thank those Texas Tribune members who are joining us in person and online today. Our journalism thrives thanks to the support of our members. Texans deserve the truth, and we're dedicated to delivering it. If you're not yet a member, please consider a contribution, no matter the amount, to empower our mission. You can show your support by going to texastribune.org/donate and donating today. Today's program runs one hour with approximately 40, 45 minutes for our panel discussion and 15 minutes for your questions. We'll welcome questions from our audience here in Studio 919, and we'll ask questions on behalf of those joining us online. Please visit our Q&amp;A portal at texastribune.org/ask to submit your questions and let us know where you're joining us from. Before we begin today's program, let me briefly introduce our panel. Our moderator, Rebecca Allen, is the politics editor for the Tribune, where she previously served as the news editor. Before joining the Tribune, she worked as a State House reporter for the Dallas Morning News. And our panelists, in alphabetical order, I should note, for those having registered, that Brian Lopez, Tribune's public education reporter, is unable to join us this morning, but we're happy to have Zach Desparte in his place. Zach is a politics reporter for the Tribune, investigating power, who wields it, how and to what ends through the lens of Texas government. And he previously covered Harris County for the Houston Chronicle. Edward McKinley reports on Texas state government and politics from the Hearst Bureau in Austin for the Houston Chronicle and the San Antonio Express/News, with a particular focus on education issues. And Patrick Zvitek is the primary political correspondent for the Texas Tribune. Patrick covers elections, state leaders, the legislature, and political trends across the state. He previously worked for the Houston Chronicle's Austin Bureau. I thank our panel for joining us this morning for a conversation that is very much about making sense of the moment. Rebecca?
Thanks so much. Good morning, and thank you guys for joining us. It has been an absolutely exhausting year of legislating. We are now embroiled in the fourth special session. Tensions are high. People want to go home for Thanksgiving, and the legislature is being called by Governor Greg Abbott to pass two border bills and two school funding bills, one of which is the special, the school voucher bill, both of which failed in the third special session. School vouchers or education savings accounts are the use of taxpayer dollars for private schools. And that is Abbott's big priority that is dominating the conversation in the current special session. But before we jump into vouchers, Patrick, can you set the stage for us a little bit by talking about how historic or not this year of legislating has been? How common is it that lawmakers go this long? And what is the cost to taxpayers?
Sure. Well, we did a story on this recently, so it's all fresh in my memory. We have had four special sessions after a regular legislative session before, but never before has that fourth special session come so soon in the same exact year as the regular legislative session. So I think there have been 10 legislative cycles before where there was a fourth special session, but it was usually spaced out to give lawmakers more time to regroup, or it was in response to an urgent issue in the next year. But this is unprecedented in terms of having a fourth special session so soon after the regular session. As far as the cost, I mean, you know, it's hard to tally up all the, all the costs that go into holding a legislative session in Austin, but one of the main drivers of that cost is the per diem, which is a daily payment that lawmakers get every day they're in session to help cover their expenses of being in Austin. That per diem is currently $221 a day, and so you can do the math and you start seeing how, you know, every 30-day session is, you know, over $1.2 million or close to $1.2 million in per diem payments, I believe. And so, you know, there's, we're currently, in terms of per diem payments, up above, you know, easily over, over $3 million.
Thanks.
When you, I think that's before we get to, I think, the regular session, if I recall correctly. You got to add the per diem payments for the regular session, too.
Right. All right, let's talk about last night. Last night, we saw some movement on the border bills by the House. In SB 3, which is the, the funding bill for border construction, which includes money for the, for the wall, and SB 4, which is the bill to create a new state criminal statute for border crossing, state being the operative word because there, it is already a felony, a federal crime. That bill is making its way to the governor's office. Zach, can you talk a little bit about what makes this legislation so controversial, in particular to Democrats? And in, for one state senator, Brian Birdwell, who openly criticized it on the Senate floor?
Sure. Well, I think principally, Democrats feel that this legislation is plainly unconstitutional. And I think that they wonder why the legislature is focusing so much on an issue that, that may not hold up in the courts. And I think that they see, you know, immigration is principally a federal issue, and that the state should not, not waste its time doing that. There have been several pushes in the past that the legislature has taken into the immigration area. There was SB 4, I think that was the 2017 session that also was, was controversial. And they just think that, you know, again, the legislature shouldn't spend time in this. They think that it's particularly cruel. I think that is a waste of state money. I mean, certainly, the fact that Texas would, would spend its own money building a border barrier when the federal government principally, it's their responsibility to do that. They wonder, of all the things we could spend money on, including in this session, if we're talking about, for example, public education, why would we devote so much money to, to the border?
Is it the point that it get, that, that it is litigated? Like, are Republicans inviting a lawsuit?
I think that the Republicans are well aware that this will end up in the courts. The Abbott administration is entangled with, with the Biden administration on a number of immigration issues, including the, the border barriers that they have already put in. So they're certainly well aware that this will end up in the courts, and it is not a unique thing for the legislature to do that, much of what the legislature has done in the past. Before the Dobbs decision on abortion had, had been to pass abortion laws in Texas, that ultimately ended up in the courts, and many of them were struck down.
Okay, let's, let's talk about vouchers. There remains a huge question mark on whether Abbott's top priority vouchers will pass. Meanwhile, he's threatening to bring the legislature back again if they don't pass vouchers in this particular special session. Patrick, can you talk a little bit about Abbott's evolution on school vouchers? He is pitching himself as the ultimate voucher advocate. Has that always been the case?
No, it's not always been the case in terms of the, the intensity of his support for this proposal. He has, in previous legislative sessions, voiced support or made overtures, you know, to this, the advocates for this proposal before. I think 2017, we mentioned that session. I believe that was maybe the last time you heard Abbott really seriously talking about this proposal. But, you know, going into his reelection campaign in 2022, he really latched on this issue. I think he saw nationally that it was gaining momentum, at least inside the Republican Party. You had the Virginia governor's race in 2021, where this idea of giving parents more control over their kids' education was a, a hard-fought issue, and the Republican won in that race. It was a, you know, not a resounding victory, but it was still a big, a big win for the GOP in that race. And so, he campaigned on this issue pretty openly in his reelection campaign. I don't think he really hid his intentions from voters. And so, you know, that really set him up to push hard for this issue in the current legislative cycle, and we have seen him push very hard for this issue. I don't think I've seen him put as much political capital on the line as he has, you know, in his entire governorship for the, for this issue. We saw him earlier this year, you know, go on this tour across the state of different private schools, trying to rally support for this proposal. We can obviously talk about, you know, legislative history on this proposal, but we've gotten to the point now where, you know, after long being stalled in the House, it's been voted out of a committee, and it's expected to be debated on the House floor on Friday. But I think most people still believe, you know, it's not a done deal. We've seen how the House floor has descended into mayhem, you know, already many times in these special sessions, and this is a very, you know, controversial issue, and I wouldn't expect nothing, nothing less.
Right. That it got out of committee is, is pretty significant, and that we're going to see a House floor vote this Friday is, is significant because, at least in recent history, we haven't seen the House take an up or down vote on, on vouchers. How close, Ed, do you think this vote is going to be? I'm curious if you have a sense of how many lawmakers are really up in the air.
I think that's a great question. I think there were 24 Republicans earlier this year that signaled that they were intending to hold strong on opposing vouchers. There's been a story that's been told by a few of them that one of them actually had custom pins made with a little 24 on it, and they all handed them out. And the message was kind of like, let's hold strong, let's be the holdouts. Some of those very Republicans have voted to advance this bill. But in short, the answer to the question is, it's going to be close. I don't think anyone knows exactly how this is going to shake out. And what's particularly interesting about that is I think people that are used to watching things unfold at the legislature, it's generally carefully choreographed. It's like they say about lawyers, don't ask a question you don't know the answer to. I think the House Speaker follows that rule generally of not bringing somebody to the vote, something to the floor unless you know what the votes are going to be. But in this rare instance, genuinely, I don't think anyone knows what the vote's going to be.
I mean, do we, I mean, you mentioned the floor vote as if there's a floor vote that we know for sure is going to happen. I mean, I feel like there's a number of chapters or questions to get answered before we can even see if there's going to be a floor vote. Is there going to be a quorum on Friday? I mean, you know, what are going to be the points of order? What are going to be the amendments? You know, for example, I think a lot of people expect an amendment that would just strip out, a vote on an amendment that would just strip out the school voucher component of this bill. Abbott has obviously, as you, as you would probably predict, Abbott would not sign that bill. So does that mean we even move to a floor vote if it gets stripped out? So there's just so much uncertainty, I think, and I agree 100%. You know, usually, things are so pretty well-choreographed in, in both chambers, but this is a situation where I think it is truly up in the air.
Yeah, I think it's, it's important to remember that, that the Speaker is under quite a bit of pressure from Republicans in the Senate, and certainly from the governor, to bring this issue to an actual vote. We had sort of had some discussions about, you know, how much is this, this current fourth special session about getting a voucher bill passed versus, from the governor's perspective, at least, at the very least, getting House members to actually take a formal position on vouchers? Because one of the important pieces of context here is, is the governor has essentially said to the Republican holdouts that Ed had mentioned, if you continue to hold out and don't pass this, I will support primary challengers against you. The filing deadline is at the end of this legislative session. The governor needs to know exactly who's on his side and who's, who isn't before he decides who to back.
I think it's interesting that we don't know. Like, usually, it feels like lawmakers tend to broadcast how, how they're going to weigh in on a particular controversial vote, they want to defend it. Why do you think, on this particular issue, so many lawmakers are keeping their cards so close to the vest?
I think a big part of it is that it's not just about, can this pass the House? It's, is the version of whatever the House could hash out, as Patrick said, with, with all the amendments, with the accountability measures they may or may not add to the voucher program? I mean, and it's also, it's not just a voucher bill. It's a massive school finance bill. It completely changes the accountability system. It quintuples charter school facility funding. I mean, I've, I've heard some lawmakers say it's essentially 40 bills in one. So they would need to reshape this so that it could pass the House. And then the question is, well, will it pass the Senate? And then the question is, well, will whatever passes the Senate pass the House again? Will the governor sign it? So the question is, if you're a rural Republican and you, you were elected to office with the support of a lot of the school districts in your area, are you going to take a vote that is potentially going to make you politically vulnerable if you're not even sure that it's going to become law?
Before we get too deep into the politics of this, Ed, can you talk a little bit about the policy of this? If this, I, I know that it can change a lot, but as written, the House version at least, how dramatically would that change the landscape of education in Texas? What have you seen in other states that have passed vouchers? And how close does our legislation look to that?
So the short answer is that it would be a dramatic reshape of the landscape of public education. There's been a few states that have had similar programs for a longer period of time, mainly Florida and Arizona. And in recent years, they've expanded them. As Patrick mentioned, there's been a big national movement for school choice, for parental empowerment. You're seeing it in the grassroots and this sense of frustration for parents at school board meetings. And the governor has tried to tap into this with his rhetoric about schools promoting woke values or trying to indoctrinate kids. So as part of that, there's been a big expansion in a number of states of these programs. And largely, what we've seen is that large percentages of existing students in private schools are taking advantage of this. In some states, it's been as much as 70%. That was the number in Florida for their enrollment in one of their top voucher programs last year, since they expanded to universal eligibility. But the way that public school, traditional supporters of public schools look at it is that there's already a parallel system of charter schools that's funded by the state, and that creating a voucher program, no matter how small, is going to expand over time. And this is what Abbott has supported with his program, is where it would be capped by the amount of funding available rather than a, a number set in law for the number of seats available. So whenever there's more money, they could expand the program without, without limit. So if they were to do that, there would then not only be the parallel charter school system, there'd be a parallel private school system. And the way that school funding works in Texas is that if you're a public school district, which are already not flush with cash, and you have students leaving for charter schools, which is already happening, that's less money to spend to recruit and retain teachers, to, on curriculum, on a number of things. And the private schools would just introduce even more strain on, on that system.
So the knock on, on vouchers is that it takes money away from public schools. And I think we're talking about it theoretically, like what could happen in Texas, but have you seen that detrimental effect take place in other states where this has happened?
So I think the, the research has been extremely muddled here and there. There's been some evidence that the academic results at the public schools in those systems have actually improved somewhat, but the results for the kids who are receiving vouchers have been all over the place. And I think what we've seen is that there's a stratification of the kids whose families are highly engaged, who are aware of the availability of these programs, who are comfortable jumping through the legal hoops required to get access to these funds. And those kids more often are ending up in the private schools. And then the public schools are most frequently ending up with kids who are from lower socioeconomic statuses, who are in, have special needs. And those are often the kids who are the most expensive to educate for, from a school district perspective, which can be even more strained on the system.
Let's, let's talk about the rural Republicans. I'm fascinated by them. Can you talk to me a little bit about why they are so dug in? I mean, the majority of Republicans do support this. It does poll pretty well. They're under immense political pressure. There's threats of primaries. What is their motivation? What is their vantage point? How do they, why do they see this issue so differently than other Republicans who consider this to be like a very easy issue? And I would toss this out to any of you guys who want to weigh in on this.
I just wrote about this, I'll, I'll jump in short, but the, the brief answer is that there are less private schools in rural areas, and that the kind of connection of people in rural areas to their schools is more direct than in urban areas. So like we were talking about with the question of woke schools indoctrinating kids, you see those issues a lot less in rural areas because the proportionality of school, elected school board members to the size of the community is a lot more direct.
Yeah, I mean, I think you summed it up pretty well. I mean, it's just personal relationships, too. They're more likely to have a, a close personal relationship with public school, you know, school board members, administrators, principals, teachers in their district. So, but I think he summed it up pretty well.
Yeah, often the top employers in rural counties are the school districts as well.
It does seem like we have seen some movement, though, from some of these rural Republicans. I mean, for example, Brad Buckley was a, has signaled opposition to this in the past, and now he's Pub Ed Chair, and he is this, you know, the author of HB 1. What has changed for these members?
Well, I, I think first of all, in terms of thinking about who's opposed it in the past, you know, we have to add the caveat that this has always been a test vote on, on budget night. So when we talk about who's opposed it in the past, we're mainly looking at who voted for that budget amendment banning voucher-like programs. So, look, the, the legislative landscape battlefield is going to change when it's an actual live issue with a chance of actually reaching the governor's desk. And so, I try not to put, when I think about this issue, I try not to put too much stock in who voted for and who voted against that amendment. But it is true that it gives all of us, you know, in journalism and politics, a baseline to look at and, and think about who is, you know, who is, who's been where on this issue in the past. And so, what's changed is that it's now actually, this year, it's become a live legislative issue, not just a live legislative issue, but a priority of the governor. The governor has campaigned relentlessly on it. And so I think that that, you know, that, that softens that group a, a little bit, the factors I just described. And we're going to learn, we're going to learn probably pretty shortly, you know, how soft that group has become, as Ed pointed out. I mean, there's, I think within that 24, there's certainly some that are very proudly dug in on this issue. It's just a question of what is that subset? How, how big is that subset inside of 24?
Yeah, yeah. I, I think it's also worth noting that the, the national politics and national atmosphere about public education, I think, has shifted compared to years past. Ed had mentioned the concerns about wokeness or indoctrination in public schools. I think that there is widespread concern and dissatisfaction about how public education handled the pandemic. I think all of these things, these things feed into a fundamentally different atmosphere on voucher issues than existed in the past.
And if I could just add to that, I think that that aspect that Zach just identified is a big part of the frustration, both of people in rural areas and people in urban areas, Democrats, whomever, who oppose vouchers. And it's this sense that they've been set up to fail the traditional public schools. They feel like, you know, Texas lags far behind the national average in school funding. Special ed is underfunded by over $2 billion in the state. Like I said, there's a large system of charter schools that are competing with public schools for dollars. There's a robust accountability system in Texas. Houston ISD just got taken over. There's all sorts of, of strings and hoops that traditional public schools have to jump through. This is how they feel. And so now, the idea is that, well, there's a sense of frustration, and that's being capitalized on to promote the idea of vouchers, but then, under a voucher program, dollars would go to an unaccountable private institution that wouldn't have to jump through a lot of those same hoops.
What is your sense of how voters in these rural Republican districts feel about it? Obviously, they don't have as much access to private schools, but there is a component for homeschooling. I mean, do you get the sense that, that those voters are as dug in as maybe like school employees?
Well, I think this was on the ballot for the Republican primary last year, and it got about just under 90% support, and it was like 88%. Although, I think any political science professor would tell you that when you get in the weeds of public policy opinion polling, it's going to be a little dicey. Yeah, I mean, the sentiment seems to be, and this is certainly what Governor Abbott is betting on and saying that this is going to be a winning issue in the primaries, that the Republicans in these areas are supportive of his school choice push. But I think, given the lack of, of private school options, there's perhaps a little bit less energy in the grassroots. And it's worth noting, too, on the homeschool point, that would be capped at about $1,000 in the House and Senate proposals rather than the full 10-5 that the House has proposed or eight in the Senate. I just did a story recently on Ernest Bales, an East Texas rural Republican, and his point was, I know lots of great families that homeschool their kids, and the last thing that they want is to invite the government into their homes to participate in that process. So he feels, in his area at least, that even the homeschoolers are not supportive of this.
Zach, Abbott has threatened that if they don't pass this bill this time, that he's going to get active in their primaries against the holdouts, and he's more recently threatened to call them back for another special session, sort of infinitely. Do you think this strategy is working for him? And what else is Abbott doing behind the scenes to get, to ensure that this legislation gets passed?
Yeah, I mean, whether, whether it's, it's working remains to be seen. I hope we learn as much as we can on Friday, when this finally reaches the, the House floor. I, I think a lot of this, and I'm talking about the entire year of 2023, when, as, as Patrick mentioned, the legislature's been in session more days than ever in the history of Texas. It has really shown that the governor is not a legislator. He had never served in either chamber, as opposed to, to past governors. I think that he is not used to a lot of the, the deal-making and haggling that goes on in the Capitol. And I think that his approach has been more and more, I want you to do what I want on this thing, or else. And the "or else" is, I will fund your primary challenger and endorse them. I, what I have observed from talking with rural Republicans is, they don't seem to express a fear of that as much as the governor might, might think or might kind of project publicly. These areas, like Ed said, are very tied to their public schools. These rural members really feel like they still have the backing of their voters and their school districts, and they feel like, I mean, go ahead, primary me, but I feel confident in that. I, I don't think anybody, any reporter, any member of the legislature wants to be here in January. I think that would be miserable, to be honest. The vibes there already are not great, as you had, you had sort of touched on. And I also don't see really what the point of that is because the governor would have to decide, really in December, who he is going to be supporting in the, in the primaries. So the, any session that happens in, in January or February, already into primary season, would be, I'm already primaring you or supporting your opponent. The incentive to do what I want would be less for, for those holdouts.
I mean, Abbott, you know, has struggled to manage the Texas House in particular throughout his governorship, and that's, you know, we can have a very long conversation about that. Zach can, on some of the reasons maybe why he's struggled to manage that relationship. But even just looking at this year, he's made a number of public statements on this issue and the legislative state of play that he's contradicted. You know, one that comes to mind is- You know, one that comes to mind is in the third special session, he said he would expand the call to include public school funding and teacher pay raise only once they pass school vouchers. Well, they, they didn't do that and he expanded the call. And so, you know, the House was grateful for that, but it was one more Abbott statement where, you know, his threat didn't really stand up when it came to crunch time. Previously, you know, over the summer, he vetoed a bunch of bills and said that he would bring them back, revive those bills once lawmakers passed property tax relief. Well, they passed property tax relief and those bills are still vetoed. He didn't bring them back. And so we've seen a number of key junctures this year where he doesn't stick to his word in terms of what he's dictating or instructing to lawmakers. And I think that that has exacerbated an already, you know, tough relationship with, you know, the Texas House.
Yeah, just a couple of points to add to that. And it's, it's possible, like Zach said, that we might be all going a little bit crazy spending so much time over there, but you do start to get really in the weeds of kind of reading the tea leaves. So the, the ways in which the governor has slightly changed his position on this issue could be significant. For instance, he had said originally, when he called the third special session, he said, I'm going to call a third. If I can't pass vouchers, I'm going to call a fourth and then I'm going to start primaring people. And instead recently, he said, I'll call a fifth, I'll call a sixth, whatever. So that would seem to be perhaps a slight shift from, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to leverage you to do what I want through a political threat versus I'm going to leverage you to do what I want through sheer exhaustion. And then on the other point, you were just saying about the governor adding the school finance to the call. Notably, when he did that, he put out a press release that I think probably startled maybe every journalist in Austin, where he said, we have an agreement on school choice. And it is still unclear to me what was agreed to, because clearly, I mean, the House Speaker has not gone out on a limb to say, we have the votes for this, I've been whipping votes. He's, he said the opposite. He said, we're going to bring you to the, the floor and see what happens. So it's, it's very unclear what was actually agreed to and, and why the governor chose to do it that way.
Yeah, I was going to say, I mean, you know, we'll, if this passes, if this, you know, becomes law, it, it will be a big triumph for Abbott politically. Right now, I'm willing to give him credit for, if, if that happens, I'd be willing to give him credit for simply never, never giving up big picture and being relentless and exhausting lawmakers to the point of, you know, coming around to his agenda. I'm not sure the, the legacy will be that there was any brilliant inside the Capitol strategy at the end of the day. Of course, you know, it'll be behind the scenes. We'll learn more about what happened behind the scenes if it passes and there'll be more reporting on that. But for now, if it does pass, I feel like the credit to Abbott is just based on not giving up and wearing out lawmakers versus any kind of, again, brilliant legislative strategy.
What is the downside for him in just calling them back and back, and back and back and back until they give him what he wants? Is there a downside politically?
I don't know. I mean, the truth is that there, I mean, all the people in this room care and pay a lot of attention. Truth is, I think a lot of people in Texas aren't plugged into the day-to-day legislative maneuvering of the Capitol. So I don't know that it's going to affect his overall vote count in his reelection or if he runs for president someday or whatnot. But I definitely think his future ability to get what he wants out of a legislature that is more and more frustrated with him, he could potentially compromise that. That seems like a possibility.
Yeah, I think you have to weigh the consequences of continuing to bring the legislature back against the consequences of failing on your key legislative issue that you have put so much political capital into. You know, it's kind of like throwing good money after bad. I'm not sure like what that calculus is, but it's in play now.
Is this hardball strategy that he's taken, is this, is this out of character for Abbott, Patrick?
No, not necessarily. As I said earlier, you know, we haven't seen him put this much political effort into a legislative issue in a long time, if not ever. But the hardball strategy is, is, I don't think, is certainly not new for Abbott. You know, we saw him in the 2018 primary season, for example, back primary challengers, back fund and campaign with primary challengers to three House Republicans who had gotten crosswise with him one way or another. He ended up going one for three on those races. So we've seen him get aggressive before, you know, threatening to veto and also falling through on a threat to veto funding for the legislature last legislative cycle, if I'm recalling correctly. I know it all blurs together. So yeah, the hardball strategy, I don't think is, is, is new for Abbott, but we haven't seen him apply it to such a high priority, I think, as, as we're seeing it this cycle.
What is the sense you're getting from House members in your conversations with them? Are they frustrated with Abbott? Are they more frustrated with the Senate? I mean, what, like, what are the relationships there?
I think there's certainly a, a sense of frustration. I mean, I spoke with one Democrat on the day when the Republicans held the press conference where they said, this is a quorum break, they're trying to impede us from doing the House business. And this person said, I have an eye appointment today. I'm not, I'm not ditching town to try to stop the House from doing its business. It's just that we've been in session all year and I've got to live my life. And that's an important thing, I think, to remember about the Texas legislature is that this is not a, these are not professional lawmakers in the sense that it's not what they do all the time. These people have day jobs, they're supposed to do this every other year. And so now with every subsequent session, they're, they're just attempting to fit it into their lives.
You had mentioned that the Republican, the rural Republicans you've talked to are not necessarily worried about these primary challenges. I mean, what issue, how much do we think voters are thinking about school vouchers? What are the, the issues that, that they're thinking about heading into March?
I mean, I think in, in terms of vouchers, Ed had sort of touched on this, where like the, the top line, like polling question about, about, if you frame it about school choice, I think it's a popular issue. But once you dive into the weeds about like, what are the, what are the trade-offs for it, it gets really murky very quickly. Obviously murky is not a great like political message in terms of the primaries. I, I don't want us to lose sight of, we've, we've talked a lot about vouchers, but the, the Paxton impeachment and its consequences still are going to loom large over the primary. I think that is a more, more graspable, more potent issue for Republican primary voters that, I mean, the, the Republicans I have talked to are, are more concerned about that having consequences, especially for the, the majority of Republican House members who had supported the failed impeachment than their, their position on vouchers.
Just a quick point, just based on the polling that, that y'all do with UT, I mean, going back a long time, one of the top issues to many voters, I think maybe the top issue is border security and immigration. So, so long as the governor continues passing these bills that have very strong restrictions on the border and that those are very popular, I, I think that's going to be a political winner for primary voters.
Yeah, the border is just, I mean, all the data shows the border is just so much more important in a Republican primary. I would be so much more concerned if I were a, a House Republican coming out of this special session, if we didn't get these, these border bills passed versus if we didn't get a voucher program passed. I mean, that is, that would be a much higher political priority to me. And I think the Speaker is well aware of that. And you mentioned the Paxton impeachment. It was very revealing that, I think, the first TV interview that Phelan gave after the Paxton verdict was with Fox News, where he exclusively talked about the border, obviously not, you know, trying to change the topic a little bit, but that clearly was trying to navigate, you know, his chamber's message to much more politically safe territory, which is talking about the border. And again, I think that's a much higher priority for Republican primary voters right now.
It is interesting though, that the Paxton impeachment vote is, is playing like in primaries. I mean, that is much more like, like a factional, you know, like taking sides, like what kind of Republican are you, rather over school vouchers, which is like a tangible. I mean, is it, why is there so much political capital around school vouchers if it's, if it's not something that we see voters really talking about or caring about?
This is a little speculative, but I've spoken with some political consultant types who have made this point over the last couple of years. And it's basically just that education, if you look macro historically, has been a winning issue for Democrats just generally. So like this idea being that there's like issue ownership. So if we're talking about the border, Republicans are probably winning in Texas. If we're talking about education a lot, if you have a, a competition between Democrats and Republicans about who wants to spend more money on public schools, Democrats are going to win that every time. So this idea that education has historically been an issue that Democrats have owned and that school choice or inappropriate library books or CRT, that these are inroads to talk about an issue and to start to chip away at it in a way that, that Democrats can't do.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a great point. I mean, if you look at the next, you know, we're talking very long-term here, but I mean, long-term, it is, I think, for the Republican Party, one of their, you know, I, I think they would consider it one of their highest imperatives to take more ownership of education as an issue. And as you just pointed out, this is an inroad into that. I mean, I think that for Republicans, taking more ownership of education is very imperative to their long-term health as a party.
And to that point, worth noting that at the event where Abbott kind of kicked off or signaled that this was going to be a big push for him, that was on the South Side of San Antonio. He was appearing with a Republican House member who had just been elected or was about to be elected, John Luhon, who kind of, it's a, it's a swing district, he's a Latino member, they're trying to make, they're trying to make inroads with those communities. I think it really signaled the intention of this. I mean, a lot of, a lot of Mexican-American people in Texas are Catholic, they might want more access to Catholic schools. All of these things kind of fit together through that lens.
Let's, let's talk about the tensions in the, in the House and the Senate right now. There, it has been essentially war between Lieutenant Governor Dan Patrick and Speaker, House Speaker Dade Phelan. Does this feel different? I mean, I, I came to Texas post Joe Strauss and I know that there was a lot of tension there too. But Patrick, I mean, can you talk a little bit about, is this par for the course or does this feel significant?
Well, obviously Lieutenant Governor Dan Patrick had tensions with Joe Strauss. There were wars of words back then as well. I think this, this conflict is more just out in the open and, and transparently spilling over into elections and into the political space. You know, I mean, you know, back in the, you know, back in the day, but like, you know, three or four years ago or, you know, two, two years ago, we used to kind of like look at, look for like Dan Patrick's fingerprints on like meddling in the House and that kind of thing. And it just seems these days, it's just much more criticism and judgment, you know, and trying to sow discontent in either chamber is, is just much more out in the open. I, I do think it's, it's somewhat interesting in that they still have been able to strike deals this year despite all the, the heated rhetoric. It's a different story about, you know, how long those deals would have taken if they weren't at war and who got the, the better end of each deal. But we saw them ultimately come together on the property tax deal despite, you know, quote unquote, war of words during those special sessions. And even after the more recent, you know, spat between the Speaker and Lieutenant Governor, we saw lawmakers in each chamber, Republican lawmakers in each chamber, announce deals going into this special session on some border bills. And so, you know, it, it is interesting that, you know, we have these huge moments of conflict, but it looks like they still are ultimately able to come together on some priorities.
It is interesting though, I mean, with the property tax bills from the, the initial round of special sessions and with the border legislation, it, it does feel like everybody's like speaking the same language, right? They're all, both chambers want to pass property tax cut, they want to pass this border security legislation and yet it gets delayed because of these differences they have in the minutia. I mean, does it seem like those differences, like those log jams were substantive or was it like due to the political infighting?
Well, I mean, look, I, I think that on property taxes, they had some substantive disagreements on the best way to achieve property tax relief. I mean, you saw two, obviously the, the Senate had a very strong substantive belief in the, in increasing the homestead exemption. And you saw the House, you know, more focused on appraisal caps. And I thought that was actually covering politics for, you know, for several years in Texas. I thought that was actually relatively substantive debate. But on other issues and, and a part of that issue as well, certainly it's about politics, it's about personality, it's about one chamber being able to say they moved the needle on this issue more than the other chamber. That of course, I think is, is a part of it.
I think there's like a little bit of a classic Washington DC political story about a freshman House member that refers to, say they're a Republican, they refer to, talk to an old colleague and they say, oh yeah, the Democrats over there, they're the enemy. And they say, oh, no, no, they're, they're the opposition, the Senate is the enemy. And I think that attitude persists in, in Texas politics for sure.
Do you think that the feud is more between Patrick and Phelan? Well, let me rephrase. Do you think that the rank and file members feel as strongly about the opposite chamber as, as their leadership does? Or do you feel like they're caught in the crosshairs?
I think they're more caught in the crosshairs than sharing the depth of disdain that the two leaders share for each other. I think that's probably more accurate to say.
Yeah, and to Patrick's earlier point, I think that they are more upset about the governor vetoing so many bills over the summer. And most of those had nothing to do with the disputes, the property tax disputes. And some of them were on the consent calendar. Some of them didn't even need to be voted on by the whole, by a, by a roll call. They were just like, everyone agreed. So that was frustrating that those, those bills have never been brought back by the governor.
Okay, I want to leave some time for some audience questions.
So as we enter into Q and A, a reminder for those joining us online that you can ask your questions at texastribune.org/ask. Couple of questions here and then invite anyone from our audience to ask questions. But specifically about the, the tone of, of politics, you, you all began discussing that toward, toward the end of the conversation today, but those tuning in this morning to a discussion that's really going inside Texas politics certainly noted some news out of Washington yesterday with a sitting US Senator challenging someone testifying to a fight, a physical fight, and a former House Speaker accused of hitting or assaulting a fellow congressman. And Ed made a distinction between the professional lawmakers and, and those who aren't. But does the politics, I guess a couple of questions here, you know, that politics of a fighter to this degree, what is that, what is that kind of heated rhetoric and, and behavior look like as you see in Texas politics? Does that have resonance, resonance with voters today, especially with such polarization? And who are those on both sides of the aisle, kind of trying to tone down some of that rhetoric without compromising the larger, you know, their larger agenda?
Sure, I'll try to, I'll try to answer that. I mean, I think it, you know, in terms of the political incentives for that tone and that kind of behavior, I mean, in the Republican primary, especially post-Trump, you know, we regularly see that voters want their, you know, elected representatives. You know, and again, we have gerrymandered districts in Texas, so these are, you know, voters in overwhelmingly Republican districts, but they want their representatives to be seen as fighting and to be seen as, you know, confrontational and combative. You know, so we, we constantly see that and it's, you know, it creates a political incentive, I think, for, you know, that tone to be more harsh than it otherwise would be. But maybe you guys want to take a stab at that?
Yeah, I mean, the only thing that I would add is from, from talking with some of the, the rural members about vouchers or a number of issues, there, there is a sense among the grassroots members of the Republican Party that they really dislike when they elect lawmakers who end up with what they call compromisers in Austin, that, that collude with Democrats that work together on issues. I think that there is a disconnect between that and what is, compared to Washington, still a, a pretty collegial atmosphere among lawmaking, especially on, there are a number of issues where there is broad agreement. We're talking about the controversial ones, but they still can get stuff done. I think you see a disconnect more and more with that in Republican voters.
So we have some questions online and then we'll, we'll have questions from our audience. This person asks, what if the House passed SB two, school finance as is? If it went to the governor, would he sign it?
I think probably no. That was from the last special though, right?
Yeah, I don't think that's a live bill for this special session, though I, I'm, I'm not 100% sure.
I think that's right, but the answer is that Abbott has, has said in no uncertain terms, he's not going to sign a school finance bill that doesn't have a voucher attached to it.
Hi y'all, my name's Claire. So the governor obviously has a lot more power in this process. He can call special sessions, he can set the agenda. And we've seen in this last session that the representative spoke and he said, well, I want more special sessions. And he's going to continue to want more. So how concerned should we be that he's not honoring the process and honoring what the representatives are saying and threatening until he gets his way is what it feels like?
Thank you for a great process question. So I, I talked with some, some Democratic members who are upset about the governor continuing to do this. And they point out that the way, the way that the constitution is, is written, like the governor is supposed to call special sessions for like really emergency reasons. It was never set up to have them to be regular. And lately, not just this year, but lately, in sort of the modern era, they have become more more regular. And the governor has more power in special sessions than he does in regular sessions. He gets to set the agenda, he gets to tell legislators when they have to come. They can adjourn and peace out like they did in the first, sorry, losing track, first special session the House met for a day and then said, see you later. But I think that there are broader concerns about the process, and I think some Republicans, setting aside the issues, would also agree about that.
Just super quick, it is probably worth noting that when that decision was made to do a biennial legislature, I would imagine part of the historical reasoning for that was that people were traveling here in horse and carriage. So that might be part of it too, part of the evolution.
Thank you. My name is Robbie, and I have two daughters and a granddaughter who are teachers in Texas public schools. They're frustrated and angry that they've been held hostage, the pay raise and expanding school funding, been hostage to vouchers. Do you think the teachers will organize against those who have done that?
I think it's a great question about this primary season, I think, which is, we know who is on the pro-voucher side in a Republican primary. It's less at least publicly apparent who is going to be the political force on the anti-voucher side, you know, called pro-public ed, pro-teacher. And so I think that, you know, there's an opportunity there for those groups to get more organized. They may be mobilizing right now, obviously, we're getting close to the primary season, we just don't know about it. But, you know, it'll be interesting to see in this primary season whether, inside the Republican primary, there are teacher groups, pro-public education groups that are able to get more organized, to go against those House Republicans, or to have the backs of House Republicans who voted against vouchers. I think that's a big question, and probably not a satisfying answer entirely, but that's just, it just raised that curiosity of mine.
But I certainly think that that word that you used of hostage, that has certainly been language that has been thrown around a lot, and it's a very easy concept to understand, this idea that teachers aren't, teachers won't get raises, schools aren't going to get more money unless we get a voucher. Whether you want to call that hostage-taking, or negotiating, or whatever, it's certainly been the governor's stated position that that is what we're doing. So I think that there are a lot of people like you that have strong feelings about it, and whether that translates to the ballot box in five months, four months, or a year from now remains to be seen, but yeah.
I also just think it's really interesting, I came to Texas in 2019, and I remember that special session where it was like, who between the House and the Senate could give teachers the biggest raise? It was like 5,000 in the House, and then it was 10,000 in the Senate, and it just felt like it was a competition to who could, you know, make teachers the happiest. And it's just very interesting how, like, you know, the rhetoric has like really flipped, and, you know, they might be losing a lot of support from the schools.
Yeah, and worth adding too, that this is happening in a time when they had a $30 billion budget surplus. So what happens if that attitude runs into a budget deficit or a real serious economic downturn like we saw in 2007?
Yes, my name's Cadino Fernandez, and I'm with El Concilio, Mexican-American landowners from East Austin, and definitely proud to see the tax relief, our home sit going from $40,000 to $100,000. My question is, do y'all sense that the governor is exercising his popularity vote as a mandate, and that's why he's doing what he's doing?
That's a great question.
Look, I mean, short answer is, I think, yes. I mean, he, the reason he's spending so much political capital is because he believes he has a lot of political capital. As I, you know, pointed out earlier, he campaigned on this school voucher issue in his 2022 reelection. He won that campaign by, I think, 10 or 11 points, you know, which is obviously a decisive margin. It was, you know, narrower than his previous margins of victory in 2018 and 2014, but still not a close race. And so I think, yeah, short answer is yes. You know, based on recent election results, based on the polling that he's looking at personally on this issue in various House districts, he believes he has a political, you know, a mandate from the people to push this issue as far as he's pushed it.
Yeah, if I'm Governor Abbott, I would frame this as, I'm loyal to the voters and not to the legislature, and I'm simply delivering on a promise that I made while I was campaigning.
Yeah, I mean, I think the governor is well-known as someone who likes to study the data before he makes decisions, and a part of that is the polling data and what's popular. So he is exercising, in his view, a mandate to push the policies that he's doing, but he's not just spending political capital, he's investing it. So if he gets school vouchers passed, you know, he said a bunch of times in these speeches, this is very popular, the people want this. I think probably in his view, he passes it, he gets all that political capital back.
This person asks, what about HB 2 on school safety? They mentioned it's a separate item in the call, but most important issue for voters according to the UT poll.
Yeah, so the legislature, the legislature obviously passed some additional school safety requirements for school districts earlier this year in the regular session, including an armed guard at every school, new hardening requirements for school districts. There was funding attached to that, but what we've heard from a number of different districts is that the funding didn't go far enough to cover what all of the expenditures they were now required to do. So I think that the legislature is hoping to address that with HB 2.
Yeah, and I think what this question is getting at is HB 2, the school safety bill is currently a standalone bill in the House, right? I think it is.
That's right.
And Abbott hasn't been as explicit, as far as I know, in, you know, holding that hostage to school vouchers. We haven't explicitly heard him say, I won't sign a school safety bill if you don't get me vouchers. And so I think that is one of the, you know, lower-key pieces of intrigue in the final days of this special session, is if Abbott would sign that bill even if he doesn't get vouchers.
Yeah, I don't think anybody would want to be seen as using school safety funds, especially in the wake of Uvalde, as a political negotiating chip.
So I mean, that is a bill that I think, as, you know, I'm sitting here today, I think, I think that Abbott could sign if it makes it to his desk and there's not, still not vouchers to his desk. So we'll have to see.
When it required a constitutional amendment to partially raise the teacher retirement pay, how is it that something as transformational as vouchers doesn't require one?
That has to do with the spending caps that the legislature uses. So there's one cap that's constitutional spending, and there's one cap that's discretionary spending. So if they put it on the ballot and it becomes part of the Constitution, then they don't have to take a vote at the legislature to bust the spending cap, which could be used against Republicans or Democrats in primaries.
One last question here, but this person says it may have been touched on briefly. What role do you think the drive for Christian nationalism has made in the voucher movement?
Sure, I can take that. You know, I think you look at where this voucher push, the kind of schools that this voucher push has been centered on, it is certainly schools that are, by and large, you know, schools that are affiliated with Christian religions, denominations. And so, to the extent that you have this Christian nationalism in Texas, it's certainly intertwined in this push, just, I think, just naturally. And some of the, and some of the rhetoric that we do see from our politicians, you know, makes it, you know, from, not necessarily, like, some elected officials, sometimes more in the grassroots, on the activist side, certainly makes it seem like the school voucher push is being, you know, animated to these voices by a desire to introduce more religion into education in Texas.
Yeah, and I would just add to that, that it's important to remember that we're not just talking about the private and religious schools that exist right now. It's about those schools that could expand or could start, because more students would have access to being able to pay to go to those schools.
Yeah, and then one additional point, similar to what Patrick was saying, is that this isn't happening in a vacuum. It's part of a statewide and a nationwide movement to kind of chip away at the barrier between public schools and religion. It had to do with the, I can't remember his name, it was a football coach praying on the field, the Supreme Court decision in the last couple of years. There was an In God We Trust bill that was passed here, they were considering the Ten Commandments bill, the school chaplain bill was passed, and school districts are currently deciding whether they're going to take school chaplains as volunteers or pay them. So this is definitely part of a broader movement to kind of introduce more religion into public schools. And I also think it ties into a point that was made earlier about seeing how far you can push certain policies that might become Supreme Court test cases, given the conservative makeup of the Supreme Court.
We had a story by Maya Panle about how the Catholic Church is one of the top advocates of school vouchers in the legislature. They have lobbyists, they are very invested, and they openly talk about how they have a dip in enrollment in Catholic, in Catholic schools, and that they're hopeful that school vouchers will help increase their enrollment, so. Okay, well, thank you guys so much. We are out of time, I really appreciate it, and thank you to my guests.